And this is a joint meeting of our Atherton City Council and the Menlo Park Fire District Boards. And we do have an agenda to follow, and we have Anthony, would you like to do the roll call, please?
I'd be happy to. Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Note that Councilmember DeGolia is not present at this time. Councilmember Widmer? The note, I know that Councilmember of-
I'm here. Sorry, it was on mute. I didn't realize it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lampres is not here at this time. I'll note when he joins the meeting. And Mayor Lewis?
I'm here.
And Menlo Park Fire Protection District, we have Board Member Corrali.
Present.
Board Member Solano.
Here.
Jones.
President.
Bernstein.
President.
And President McLaughlin.
Here.
Good. Okay, thank you very much. On our agenda, we do have an item to say the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we can all say the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate that. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was great that you stood up, Robert.
Yeah, I'm kind of in a-
Hey, you know, I give respect when it's due, you know what I mean?
That's exactly right. That was great.
We all improvise so well, don't we? Isn't that nice? Okay, so thank you for those formalities. I'll turn it back to the city clerk to kind of guide us in how public may make comments, okay?
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. So as you folks from the Fire Protection District have noticed, we run our meetings slightly different. You've all been made co-hosts, and that will allow you to control your mute and unmute as board members, key staff, and elected council members. For members of the public that are joining the meeting, you can make public comments, and there's a few options that you have to do so. So if you're joining by the Zoom link, you can look at the bottom of your screen, and there's an opportunity to click on Participants, and there you can raise your hand. That will be noticed by myself or Michelle Nifer, the clerk of the district, and we'll both give you an opportunity to speak. We, at the Atherton City Council meetings, hold those to three minutes, and it's only during certain times. We'd also like to note that it's for things that are on this agenda. If you're not joining by Zoom link, you can call in, obviously, and then you can dial star nine on your receiver. We'll see that raised hand. We also, with the City of Atherton, we allow direct message chat. So if you want to send me a link or a message on the chat feature, I'm happy to see that and accept it, and we can give you an opportunity to make a public comment. We do have several members of the public that are on the meeting. I don't see anybody that's currently indicating they'd like to make a comment at this point.
Okay. Well, seeing no public, members of the public wanting to make a public comment at this time, we will go on to the regular agenda. We do have three items to cover. And the first one is the fire station updates, report on planned upgrades for stations and associated facilities. And I'll turn it over to President McLaughlin if you want to conduct the meeting from there on for these updates.
All right, thank you, Mayor Lewis. Before I get started, I just want to introduce John Johnston, our Fire Marshal. Runs our Fire Prevention and Inspection Services Programs, and our District Council, Mr. Stephen Miller.
Okay.
Before I turn it over to Chief Chappelhooman, I just wanted to, again, thank Mayor Lewis and Councilmember DeGolia for coming to the groundbreaking last Friday at our station port. As you saw, it was well beyond the groundbreaking phase. You know, the trenches are dug and steel is in place, and it's well along. It's an exciting time to be replacing a station that has stood there for 70 years. We're very, I'm very proud of that, that it's been in service that long, and it was functioning very well until the day that it was demolished. But the new one will be, you know, seismically safe and just altogether better. But I'll let Chief Chappelhooman fill in some of those details. So with that, Chief, if you could give us an update on some of the upgrades and replacements, you know, going on around the district.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. And, you know, welcome to everybody, and obviously, you know, happy to be able to give this presentation tonight. Anthony, I sent you a PowerPoint. I don't know if you see it, if you can share it. I think to give some context to the subject very quickly, it's going to be helpful. I could move through that probably quicker than I could if I just, you know, made comments.
You should see that on your screen now.
Yeah, we see it. So councilmembers, mayor, you know, directors, everybody else who's on the call, dignified guests and so forth. You know, the Fire District was created in 1916, and as you know, serves the town of Atherton, the city of East Palo Alto, City of Menlo Park. We have four unincorporated areas, and then we also provide service to the Stanford Linear Accelerator. In fact, we just recently renewed our contract for service with them. They had been in contract with the Palo Alto Fire Department for 40 years, despite the fact that they were located in San Mateo County. So when they decided to off-site a fire station, then they could logically end up with the Fire District as its first response element. So those are really the partner agencies. And then we have the network, as you can see there, of stations that we cover. Anthony, can I move slide to slide, or do you have to do that?
I would do it unless you would want to share.
No, why don't you do it? And I think, you know, when we talk about Atherton, and this is a perfect slide to show it, we're really talking about one station in town, as you know, Fire Station Three. And then we're talking about four stations outside of town that directly respond to areas in the town. So again, as a district, it wasn't as if we looked at each community independently. We looked at the district as a whole, and stations were located based upon the best location for them to be put to service all the communities. So to explain this slide just again, very quickly, if you look at the Station Three, which is on the far left there, 79% of its response area is in the town of Atherton. And I have another slide that explains where the rest of that is. If you were to look at Station One, 34%. If you were to look at Station Four, 37%. Station Five, 27%. And then Station Six, 28% of that area or their response area is within the town of Atherton. So essentially, Atherton has five different fire stations that will respond directly to it. Can we get the next slide? And so, you know, if you look at the overall, how the district is laid out, you have 28.98 square miles. Four of that is in the marshland, eight of that is bay, 16.6 is actual landmass, and about a square mile is the Department of Energy Slack or Stanford Lands area. And then actually, Atherton itself, as we calculate, and I think you probably already know this, is about five square miles. East Palo Alto is about 2.6, City of Menlo Park is about 6. And Menlo Park actually annexed all the way into the middle of the bay in the 50s to prevent Redwood City from stacking ships out there based upon having a seaport. And then we have the four unincorporated areas that are listed at the bottom there, and you can read them for yourself. Next slide, Anthony? So, you know, a little more depth. Station One, 34% is in Atherton. You can see where the rest of its response area is, but you can see it's not just Atherton. It's Menlo Park, it's East Palo Alto, it's actually county areas. The same goes for Station Three on the right. You know, 79% is in Atherton, 9% is in the North Fair Oaks County area, and another 11% is in that Sequoia Track. Next slide. Station Four, same thing. We'll talk about that station a little bit, a little bit more coming up. As you know, you were just there for the groundbreaking, or some of you were. So 37% is in Atherton, and then the remaining is the Menlo Park, Sequoia Track, West Menlo, and then Stanford Lands is Slack. And then Station Five, right side slide there, 27% is in Atherton, 26% is in Menlo, 47% is in North Fair Oaks. Next slide. And Station Six, which is the last, again, of all five stations, I eliminated Stations Two and Seventy Seven because they don't serve you, even though they serve the district, and arguably, you know, we have a network of stations and they respond, you know, to each other's areas as well. But directly, you know, 28% of Station Six's area is in the town of Atherton, and 71% is in the City of Menlo Park. The right slide is our response blocks, and why that's important is that's how we dispatch to different areas of the district for emergency calls. Kind of like the ones that I'll need to turn my radio down on here next to me. But that was the way that we did response up until recently. And now what's happened is we've gone to AVL, Advanced Vehicle Location. So for closest unit, we no longer use an algorithm. For all of the county fire agencies, we use AVL. And I'll get into that a little bit more coming up. So let me, let me advance to the next slide.
Chief?
Yes?
This is Elizabeth. If you could turn your radio down a little bit, I'm having a hard time hearing what you're saying.
Sorry, Mayor, I, let me go around here and do that right now. Hold on.
Okay, yeah, let's take a little break here, because I do want to hear everything that you have to say.
Elizabeth, can you spot Fluffy on Old Tom?
I cannot. Where?
She's hanging off the side.
Aw, thank you very much, Chief.
Yeah, no worries. I listen to that pretty much all day long, so.
I'm sure if there's an emergency, somebody will flag you down quickly.
Oh, there's a, yeah, there's a water rescue, but we're okay. We get that handled. So that's the backbone of how the system, the system works, just in short. But, you know, when you, so when you ask about what have we been doing on facilities? You know, we rebuilt Station Two, and we're finished. It was about a 10- to 12-year project. We started out, when I became chief in 2007, we had about $6 million in reserve, which was not enough to do any one of four stations at the time that needed to be rebuilt. And when I say four, what I'm referring to is Station One, Station Six, Station Two, and Station Four. Three of those, again, directly protect the town of Atherton. So three of the five stations that we have that deliver service to the town residents and our district population as well, because they're one and the same, they needed to be upgraded. And all of those stations were built either in the late 40s, as you saw, and Dirk McLaughlin referred to as Station Four, or they were built in the, in the 1950s. Since then, once we got done building Station Two and getting past the initial issue of not having enough funds by a long shot to build the fire stations, we started to focus on how we would do that. In 2016, we were able to open up Station Two. At that time, the cost for the firehouse, and this is not all cost, but the building itself, was about $5.7 million to rebuild that fire station. Back then, when we started the project, which was about 2014, it was at 400, you know, your cost per square foot was about $450 per square foot. Then, as you know, in 2018, you know, it really opened in 2019, but in 2018, we rebuilt Station Six, which serves Atherton. And that station was built at a cost of about $7.5 million. Square footage at that time, based upon market, was about $770 per square foot. And then most recently, as we're looking at Station Four, and as I explained the day of the groundbreaking, knowing that everybody wasn't there, that station is costing us about $830 a square foot, and the station came in at a bid and awarded costs of just over $11 million. Now, when I say those are the costs, you know, don't forget those architectural fees. I know you're very familiar with this, with your, your own project. So, you know, we're looking at a cost for just the station alone there of over $15.5 million. And then we had to acquire, as we've done on a lot of these properties, property around them for another $3.6 million. So that station comes in at about $19 million. None of these are, are small feats by any stretch of the imagination. So where are we today? Well, as I mentioned, you know, Station Six, which serves you, Station Four, which serves you, Four is underway, Six is complete, and that leaves Station One. Station One, I was just talking to Dirk McLaughlin about this today. We've had it scoped because it is a training facility, and because we just did buy land behind it as well back a couple of years ago at a cost of $6 million for about an acre of raw land from St. Patrick's Seminary. With a training facility, with a separate classroom and boardroom and so forth, and building a fire station, we're looking at an anticipated cost of about $60 million. So, you know, when, when the topic was brought up, you know, where are you with stations? The good news is, you know, we're three into the oldest buildings that we had, and we've upgraded those. And even though Station Two doesn't directly serve you, by making that a larger facility and adding additional resources there, that improved our overall effective force. That's a term that's used for, you know, having enough resources to cover multiple emergencies or larger emergencies, which is important. And so that effective force, what it really means to you is that we have less coverage assignments for units that come from either the Atherton or other stations that protect Atherton because we have a large enough fire force out there now to be effective for multiple incidents or large ones. When we go to Station Six, when that was upgraded, you know, all of these stations, from a safety standpoint, are going to be drive-through. Unfortunately, in that station, we were not able, because of its downtown location and cost and available land, to build it into what we're doing at Station Four. Our standard template is a three-bay drive-through with about 10 to 12 bedrooms. That gives us a big enough footprint to locate multiple units and a battalion chief if necessary, or other rigs that we can put there. So Station Four, that you were at the other day, Mayor, is, is really, it's a three-bay. We'll have a three-person engine company assigned to it, but equally, we'll be able to comply with not only, and later on, we'll talk about standards of cover, but equally, the ISO recommendations, Insurance Service Office, of having truck coverage on that side of El Camino. That's something that we couldn't achieve with the type of truck platform that we've moved to, which is a tillered aerial ladder truck, like we have now in East Palo Alto. Why is that important? For developers and just for traffic and maneuverability for our folks, a tillered aerial uses about half the space necessary as a standard straight, what we call straight stick or straight truck, in its turning radius. So in other words, it's more maneuverable, it uses less space. For developers, it means they can build a different kind of project because we have better accessibility. But what it means for the town is we have greater maneuverability with a truck that size. And equally, we move from Station One to Station Four with another piece of equipment that allows us greater access to the town residents, meaning that station has a large area, as you know, that it responds to in the town of Atherton. So those residents up there will have a larger effective force, no different than East Palo Alto's achieved. The other part of that, it has room for battalion chief. We've started a second battalion process, and I can go to that under standards of cover. But in the end, what does it all mean? What do these stations mean? Not only they upgraded because of seismic and efficiency and all the different things that we, we try to achieve, but, you know, they're meant to house primarily, they're big garages with equipment and people in them. So, you know, having a larger force in the biggest area, if you remember looking at that first slide, means that, you know, we have a greater capability up there to take multiple calls at one time and/or put a larger force on a call, which is good for Atherton. And why is that? I think a lot of people don't realize with Atherton homes, and certainly this isn't everyone, but many, especially in those areas, you know, you have long distances between potentially homes, gated homes, homes with walls, and then those homes can be off of the roadway by hundreds of feet. It's not unusual to have a hose laid down a driveway in some of the Atherton homes of up to 1,000 feet of hose. That's what an engine company carries. So, you know, it's typically multi-company. We had a fire in Atherton some years ago, and I want to say the hydrant lay to the gate was 700 feet. The hydrant lay down the driveway was about another 600 feet. And then the hose line that had to be deployed based upon the size of the house, which barely made it to the fire, was a 300-foot attack line, and that had to go up through multiple hallways, a stairway, and then was able to get to the room and contents that were on fire. So that's, that's a much more complicated fire than we would have, let's say, in East Palo Alto or Bell Haven, where from the curb line to the front door is maybe 20, 20 feet. So, you know, again, Atherton homes are more complicated. You have long driveways, you have your hydrant system, which I know you guys have asked about. The good news is Cal Water's done a good job with Fire Prevention and our Fire Marshal, improving the amount of water available, the size of the mains, and then the hydrants themselves. So water's not as big a problem as it used to be, and we've made a lot of progress. But, you know, the complexity of a fire in Atherton, let alone medical calls and all the other things that we do, is obviously important. So let me finish with this on, on medical calls. That is the majority of what we do in the town of Atherton. So every one of these units that respond, whether it's a truck or an engine, has a paramedic or more than one on it. And so, you know, there, I like to look at them as, you know, they're a multiversal delivery platform. So when you see an engine, it's not that it can just put out fire. It has medical equipment on it. It has extrication equipment on it. It has tools and other equipment on it. And then you get to a truck. A truck is much more specialized. It has ground ladders, the aerial ladder, has materials equipment. It has technical rescue equipment. It has extrication equipment on it. And now we've gone to drones. So we also have drones at various, every one of our stations has drones that are available to operators there, and then we have drones that we carry on our battalion vehicle, and then we actually have a specialized vehicle that has drone capability, and then some that we use for, you know, aerial operations, which give us a tremendous advantage at looking at different incidents, whether it be, as we saw the other day, the incident at MA High School with the reported shooter. When that happens, then we can put eyes in the sky, or actually, some of the smaller drones, we could fly right inside the building. And we've done that for hazmat calls and so forth. So that's where we are on, you know, fire station building, and I'm happy to answer any questions, you know, associated with any one of those topics.
Thank you very much, Chief, for that report and update. I just have one quick question. I may have missed what you were saying earlier. I know the work is ongoing now with Station Four. The Almond Roll Station, is it slated at any time for upgrades?
Yeah, no, I don't see that in the next 15 to 20 years. The only upgrade that we have talked about is to locate a garage on that flag lot behind the existing station property that we bought. Excuse me. The reason for that is, the station was rebuilt, and it was too small for, you know, really, all the things that we use it for in terms of storage capability. It's actually, it houses a lot of our, our supply for emergency medical incidents and so forth, which is, is, again, it was not conducive. And sadly, and I was here and involved with those projects when they were built, money was a real issue. That station was rebuilt. It was a brick, it had a brick building there that was not strongly reinforced. So in the '89 earthquake, it took not only a hit, but it was a collapsed wreck moving forward. So when we rebuilt it, unfortunately, the chief that was involved with that at the time did not choose to build it bigger than it was, and I don't think that was even a concept. We did the same thing at our Station Five, which also provides service to the town, and then we rebuilt or rebuilt. We built Station 77 in Bell Haven, which was, you know, a vacant lot. So those three stations look alike, and they're all built about 25 years ago. And as you know, we bought the land from Martha next door and got, I think, a great deal. I know that some people were concerned we were going to do something right away. The only thing that we're going to do in the near term is, is build a garage-style storage facility behind it. And then, you know, I'll let the director speak to it, but we don't, I don't see anything there for at least, you know, a decade or two, just because we've got other priorities like Station One. There's a lot of discussion around Station 77 in Bell Haven because of what's going on with Facebook and the M2 and the growth of that area, which has exploded. So, you know, that's, that's kind of the next in line, if you will. And Station Five is, is equally, it's kind of landlocked where it is because of the traffic devices. And as you know, shutting down Middlefield to some extent in North Fair Oaks has a negative response effect on that, that unit. So moving the lanes from four to two, which, you know, is what the community wanted, that, that doesn't necessarily help our, our response capability.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up to any other members, board members or directors to ask any questions at this time. Councilmember Widmer has a question. You need to, yeah.
Yes, I'm unmuted, Chief. Chief, so my question to you, when you were going through the, the numbers with regards to the growth in, you know, cost per square foot, and then totaled it all up, the Station One number seemed extremely high. So could you go through, you know, comparing the other stations that you highlighted, which were, you know, $10 million, et cetera, $20 million? I, yeah, I, I can see really where, you know, Station One would be bigger because it is bigger, and you're going to have to have the space for the board or the training. But if you just go through what, what else would be in there, because it did seem very high, or maybe you were including the cost for the land in it, or what? Could you just explain that?
Yeah, we did a space needs assessment. So that's a third-party consultant's report. And that, that took in several variables, too. I mean, there could be underground parking. That was an option. Obviously, you know, it's, it's a much, to your point, a much larger space. There was additional storage that was placed there. You know, it's because of the size of the lot, and really not just the firehouse, you know, the training facility, the classroom, potentially a, a multi-agency coordination center, even EOC, if Menlo Park wanted to do that there, could all be located on that footprint. So those aren't, those aren't my numbers, but they're numbers by an architect that looked at it, looked at the cost of building at the time, and that's, that's what they came up with. And that's one of several scenarios for that property that the board, the board hasn't made any decision on that yet in regards to how we're going to move forward, but that is next on the discussion list in terms of, do we do it incrementally? You know, what do we do first? How do we do it? Is 60 million really the number, or is it a different number? Do we go with underground parking, or do we have enough landmass on top? So there's a number of decision points that need to be made, but that's, that's the max cost number for the build-out, at least at the time that that report was generated about a year ago, for that site.
Okay, and then as a follow-on question, you talked about the different stations and their response to Atherton. That was great. You know, and I know you know very well, both Menlo Park and Atherton are cut in half by a train. And the Caltrain strategic plan indicates the number of trains that are going to be coming during the two rush hour periods, and the rush hour periods were three to four hours in the morning, three to four hours in the afternoon. That's when a lot of accidents occur, right? And then you have to have a medical response. And when they come, the gates are going to be down most of the time. And there is really very few ways. You'd have to, if you want to go underneath at this point in time, you would have to drive up to Fifth Avenue and come underneath the track. So what, what, do you have plans for addressing that or considering addressing that?
Well, yeah, I'm happy to tell you that we do, and I'm also happy to tell you that part of that has already been in play. So, and, and Station Four helps to consider that, as did Six. So the other thing, I mentioned AVL and Automatic Vehicle Location. You know, we are in a county-wide automatic aid agreement, but we're disadvantaged in that agreement because we're up against the, the border of Santa Clara County. And we're also against, truly, in some ways, the border of Alameda County. But Santa Clara County, obviously, is the one that, you know, most affects, has a long border with us. We are not in an automatic aid agreement with Palo Alto for emergency medical services, but we are in agreement with them for fire response. So, all that said, what does that mean, and how does that, you know, help to answer your question? We, we don't expect a significant amount of help across the county line unless we have a fire, and then they're only going to come so far. And we know that Palo Alto, very much like Redwood City, has had more, is having more challenges than we are with budget. Redwood City's looked at potentially closing a station again, Station Nine, which I think is, should be a concern for the town of Atherton, certainly a concern for us. And Palo Alto, you should know, is different than we are, only because they have what's called 201 rights, which means that they can transport patients- can transport patients. And so that's a big part, that's a big different part of their model, whether you want to call it a business model or whatever, meaning they have to really focus on keeping those transport units in service. So there's a lot more effort and it looks different than just having paramedics on every unit like engines and trucks. What what does that really mean to you? And how does that translate to your question? Specifically, what it means is we won't expect a lot of help over the county line. And we probably could be, we could, in some cases, and it's happened, be stripped by Redwood City or other entities if we're not careful, meaning all the resources get pulled to a fire like we saw on Woodside Road. That's, we've tried to, you know, say and have said, that's unacceptable. So what we're gonna, what we've done about that, when I say effect size of effective force, like in East Palo Alto, we know daily by having a bigger force, we're not moving units across the freeway to do coverage for other secondary calls or just coverage in general. Let me go back to Atherton then with that same mindset, because you mentioned the rail. What we did and what we're doing is we made Station Four big enough to put a plus-one unit, meaning either a battalion chief or a smaller squad or rescue vehicle, which we have put in place in East Palo Alto. The standards of cover report that I'll get into later, but I'll just touch on it now, equally looked at that that predicament, right? So that SOC or standards of cover was done at the end of twenty nineteen and then was was presented to the board in January of twenty twenty. What were its recommendations? Station Four was in the right spot. So that meant rebuilding it made sense. That was validated by an earlier standards of cover done several years beforehand. We needed to move the truck to Station Four to balance out two trucks on either side. We used to only have one, which limited our coverage out of Station One. As you know, Station One on Middlefield and all units on that side are dramatically affected by the railroad. So exactly your point, we we found times when it was hard to get across town because of the train coming. And more trains, less crossings does not bode well for response. And then the rescue, there's, there's a recommendation for a rescue to be put at Station Six. The pandemic pushed that back a little bit, although it accelerated moving it over there as a specialized response unit for a period of time to address pandemic response, meaning it was the primary unit district-wide for any type of early medical call where there was a potential for exposure. And that worked, I think, very well. And then what you don't know is several years ago, we had put the battalion chief over at Station Six, run the times. It was not the best place to put a battalion chief if we had one battalion chief, meaning that they spent a lot of time going to calls on the other side of the freeway. So Station One was more conducive. Or better yet, if we went to two chief officers, two commanders in the district, by putting one on the other side of the freeway, which currently is what we have, we have a battalion chief at Station Two, and that chief responds into District Seventy-seven and District Five. And then we locate another one or leave the one at Station One, which then goes to Station Six's area, Four's area, Three's area, which is, you know, again, all adjoining or directly in Atherton. That's an improvement. So today, and what we're discussing, one of the things with the board and with staff is because of AVL, do we start to slide that secondary battalion chief, not only make it permanent, but locate it at Station Six so that it has greater response capability, not only into District Four and District Three? Because again, we should not have to rely on automatic aid and a chief officer from another jurisdiction, either coming from Redwood City or Woodside, now that we know there's kind of been a right sizing or more honest way of deployment in the system. So here, here's, you know, directly kind of summarizing all of that. When Four is built, you'll have a truck there. That's an improvement to response because of of the rail potential issues. So that's a response improvement, as I said, for the town of Atherton and for that whole side of the the district. By locating a battalion chief over at Station Six and making that permit, that's a huge improvement for Atherton and that side of the of the district, simply because not just the rail rail tracks, but that allows us to cover all of our calls where it's, it's a district-first response commander, which is really important because, as was explained to me when I started in this job, you know, firefighters and captains, their job is to go in and put the fire out or handle the emergency. That chief officer is really there to take command and control, especially in times where firefighters and captains could get themselves into trouble, meaning that chief is supposed to be outside, watching over that call to make sure not only their safety is a consideration, but escalation of alarms, additional resources, and typically someone in a senior position with good judgment and experience is making those calls and not feeling the pressure like a captain would to get inside or to put out a fire or handle the emergency directly themselves. So, you know, those, what we call the ground pounders, those, the day-to-day captain and crew, they're, they're a function of the field. The the battalion chief is both a function of the field and is administrative and command and control. So, you know, your, your benefit will be very shortly, I hope, is that we slide that BC over and that that become permanent. We've been doing an experiment for two years. That's actually on the agenda for the board. And that would give the town of Atherton of an incident commander on that side of the railroad tracks, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. And that's a a significant enhancement, I think, for response into the town.
Chief, not to interrupt, Councilmember Widmer, can I just make a comment or ask a quick question and then you can follow up again?
Sure.
Because I think the chief did an excellent job kind of covering a lot of ground there of his very, you know, detailed answer to Councilmember Widmer's question about, you know, the potential inability to get trucks across the train tracks to help in emergency situations. So if I can just kind of maybe summarize what I think I heard you say, because I heard you say a lot, and I, you know, can't follow everything completely, but my thinking is, what you're trying to say is that you're building these stations like Station Four with a more than enough capacity so that, you know, if there was an, an event on this, the west side, that and the other trucks couldn't get across the train tracks from the east side, then they would have the capability, more than enough capability to handle that large emergency. And conversely, with improving Station One to the, you know, and adding enough capacity with a battalion chief and this and that, or battalion commander, battalion chief, anyway, that conversely, you would have that excess capacity already built in to handle an event in the case you couldn't get across either because of a earthquake destroying the rail lines or, you know, the downtimes. Councilmember Widmer, why don't you just, that was what I wanted to ask. Why don't you go ahead and make your comment and then we'll give it back to the chief?
Yeah, so ju- just kind of as a follow-on. So, you know, I understood you were putting leadership on both sides. I understood that, you know, there's assistance potentially from the the neighboring jurisdictions, Palo Alto and and Redwood City. And if I understand it, you're, you're going to have enough capacity as far as trucks that you could move back and forth to do everything on just one side. And as we get to that time when there's not going to be the or where where it will be very congested going across those rail lines, your, your coverage where you're moving your trucks back and forth, as you described in previous meetings, will be, you know, an algorithm or so that would make sure that they have the capacity or a certain percentage of the capacity always on one side or the other. Is that correct?
That's correct. And and let me give you the exact terminology. So we're talking about strategic deployment. And then we're also talking about, as I said before, size of effective force, which is what, you know, ISO and other rating companies look at for insurance. So meaning having the right resources in the right places to do be the most effective. So to your point, a railroad track would be something they would look at because if it's, if it's not crossable a majority of the time, then they would expect that you would strategically locate resources to address that, which is what we're doing. And and by building bigger facilities, you know, we end up with those units being able to be housed adequately in safer buildings. So there's the key word reliability in deployment. So when, when deployment occurs, you you get an effective force and there's enough depth in it. So if you have multiple incidents at one time, you can cover all of it. So in short, you're going to get a truck. You're going to get another rescue probably eventually, but and more than likely, you're going to have hopefully another battalion chief on that side of the freeway permanently in the weeks to come as the board makes some final decisions about that.
Okay. And then a follow-on question about response, if I could.
I'd like to give Councilmember Hawkins-Manwellyan a chance to speak also, Councilmember Widmer.
Okay, so you don't want me to ask my follow-on question about?
You know, we're in, we're forty-five minutes into the meeting and
No problem, no problem.
Councilmember Hawkins-Manwellyan, would you like to make a comment on this?
I just had one question on what the fire chief was talking about earlier. You mentioned AVL, and I think you called it advanced vehicle location. Are you going to talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, so let me, you know, that that picture I showed on that last slide, which showed how we used to do deployment, which was you'd carve out a box on a map essentially. And in that, in the dispatch center, they then would have a fifty-deep resource list, meaning you could go up to fifty stations in the county and continue to deploy resources in there. For us, that's either single or or alarms, and depending upon the type of call, you'd get a prescribed number of units, right? So that's how it used to work. And you could, you could manipulate that by saying, well, we're going to add a minute on to it so that we go to these areas. And maybe we don't have to rely on Redwood City or Woodside to do that because logically that maybe wouldn't make sense. And equally, you know, we're just trying to cover our jurisdiction. Well, on the engines under the paramedic program, it says in that contract, it's closest unit. So, you know, you could do some of that, but you'd have, you had to be careful. The Band-Aid is off, AVL's in place. And now it means that that computer sees the closest resource. Now, what are the challenges to that? Well, Engine Three in Atherton is responding a lot into Redwood City. Because by AVL, it's the closest unit. Redwood City could argue that their Station Eleven is responding more into North Fair Oaks because there's a station that may be geographically closer to portions of that area. So kind of what I'm telling you right now is, we're not sure how this is all going to sort out for the long run. But you certainly then don't want to hear that anybody's thinking about debiting the system, a unit or a station, because that affects everybody's response now. You know, the good news is, close is always better for response. If your family, you know, your home's on fire, you have a medical call, I don't think you care who shows up to the door as long as they're competent and capable. However, that said, you know, that's, that's not where your tax dollars go. So from our perspective, we're trying to balance that out specifically now with with the battalions and looking at that directly. And equally with the other resources that I mentioned, like a truck. But we've known that for years because of ISO, your insurance rates could be higher based upon the rating that we have. So, you know, there is some built-in algorithms from the past that we got to look at on resource deployment. But AVL is new. There's, there's been problems with it. There's issues, there's challenges on, you know, data and so forth. Eventually, we'll work it all out and eventually we'll make it, you know, we'll make it as good as we can make it. But right now, it is brand new.
Thank you very much, Chief. I know our city manager has his hand raised. He has a question for you, sir.
Yeah, Chief, going further on the AVL, seeing as it's new, with the increases in resources in all of the district stations in order to address Councilmember Widmer's issue of the rail crossings, how does AVL come into play if Redwood City or another adjacent agency chooses to brown out any of their stations and rely more on the closest engine?
Yeah, that's, that has a negative effect. And so, you know, in the, in the agreement for EMS, the EMS, the Emergency Medical Services Joint Powers Authority Agreement, it says that there should be negotiation before that is implemented. I think Redwood City got a little over their skis, and this is no, you know, not to be negative to what what they were trying to do. They were trying to address a budget issue and had taken Engine Nine out of service in the past and then ran the ladder truck on medical calls. But here, here's in in simplistic form, when you don't have water in a station, meaning you have a pumper, you know, trucks don't put out fires. Those guys are good at kicking indoors and cutting holes in roofs and, you know, doing other things. But that's, when you don't have water on a unit, you got a problem. So, you know, Redwood City, by not having an engine in there potentially, and then potentially having their only ladder truck tied up was, was a real issue because what that meant was, in real terms for the town of Atherton, was that if Engine Eleven in North Fair Oaks was getting pulled over more often into Engine Nine's area downtown Redwood City, that would leave a big hole, right? So and equally, would Engine Three be pulled into Redwood? Would Engine Five be pulled more into Redwood? Would there be a cascading effect? And there would be. And so, you know, that's, that's the, to your point, the system right now is in, you know, is in balance to a, to a certain point. But there have been what I would call bad players. Now, I'm being nice. You know, the city of San Carlos, when they broke up with Belmont and got remarried to San Mateo arguably, and then, you know, Redwood City, they debited the system, a ladder truck and a battalion chief. Now, that was all what we call the South Zone, which is what we're in. So, you know, that made the distance between ladder trucks, for example, from Redwood City to San Mateo, twice the distance that it used to be, and we were one less. By adding a second truck at Menlo, we're not trying to give the rest of the system our resources. You know, we, we recognize that we're busy enough and we have enough difficulty getting around our jurisdiction. And ISO already identified that we needed those resources. So the challenge going forward, I guess, to put it in summary, is that we have to watch very carefully that auto aid has a reciprocal component and not a subsidy component. And that, and so, you know, when a, when a jurisdiction like Redwood or if it was Woodside or you know, any of their agencies down the county starts to say, we're going to reduce, brown out, whatever they're going to do, it's going to have a cascading effect. And that, that needs to be looked at by all the players. And and then decisions need to be made as to whether that's a valid thing to do or, you know, what would be the the cure for that. And I can tell you, on busy days, you know, we don't need less resources. We need more. That's what we've been able to do by improving our stations, growing our stations, adding resources. You know, I think we've done a good job of planning for the future to Bill's question. And having resources where we need them for things like the railroad tracks, when you add more trains or have less, less crossings. We're going to have resources and facilities, facilities big enough to house resources that will be strategically located, and you'll have a large enough effective force, unless you have, again, bad players that are trying to, you know, suck the resources out of your jurisdiction on, on, you know, uncontrolled. That, that's going to require the district to then stop that type of activity, probably with, you know, entities like the town or cities.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. I'm going to ask Councilmember Widmer if he wanted to make one last comment. Bill, I think you're
Yeah, just keep the the meeting moving. That's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Any other comments from any of the directors from the fire district or any, I'll open it up for the public. Does any member of the public have their hand raised? Anthony?
I needed to unmute myself. No, I don't see anyone with hand raised, just for anybody who joined the meeting late. If you would like to make a public comment, you can use the participants button if joining by Zoom link to raise your hand, or if calling in, you can dial star nine on your receiver. But I I don't see anyone.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, could I, can I make one more quick point?
Is, uh, Chief, yes, of course.
So I, and I just want to let the, the, you know, the council know as well and anybody listening. So, you know, when we say we're building a bigger station at Station Four, just so you know, and I know I mentioned it, the groundbreaking, but everyone wasn't there to hear it. Not only, you know, are we building the station, but the district board has authorized the purchase of another truck. And that takes about a year to a year and a half to build and get here. So in advance of that station opening, you know, we've ordered the other tiller. And the cost for that's between a million and a half to two million dollars between the unit itself and the equipment. It's not a small sum. And on the board's agenda for this next meeting, are three additional engines to replace older pieces of equipment that we have. That's another two and a half million dollars of money that's going to go towards three brand-new of money that's going to go towards three brand new pumpers, some of which will be located in stations that protect Atherton. So, you know, it's not just the buildings, it's the fleet. And of course, it's the personnel on them. We have currently eight personnel we just hired. And in the last five years, we've hired over fifty, well, actually, six years. There's a gap because of the pandemic, so it's a six year term. But in five years, we've hired half of our force in the last five years. So we've been, we've been busy looking ahead um as best you can. People, units, buildings, you know, it's all, uh you know, to Bill's question, it's all about being strategic and using these standards of covers and other reports so that we kind of guide what we're doing. But that's all in play, just so you know.
Hey, thank you very much for that uh summary. So um I think that we're ready to go on to our uh second agenda item, which is um let's see, I think I just got a message from um Councilmember Lempres. Let me see. Um I think he just joined the meeting, Councilmember Lempres. I don't oh, oh, we've got you on the phone. Would you like to uh uh let us know which phone you are? Councilmember Lempres, nice to have you join the meeting. We're on uh the second agenda item about to uh discuss that community preparation, preparedness and education update. Um and then there's a slash LRAD and report on emergency communication systems. I assume that these are three separate uh issues. Uh community preparedness and education update. Of course, that is something that is um very important, I believe, to Atherton uh council members and uh our Atherton residents uh as well. And so I'm very interested in uh hearing what we have to uh report on that. Is this also going to go back to the chief for for presentation? Or is one of the other directors going to do this?
No, uh it'll go back to the chief and I think he may have a staff person involved as well.
Yeah, actually, a a couple on them. So let me let me just tee it up. And I am I am watching the time as well. So we're just, we're just under an hour. You know, so we have uh two different groups and and two different presentations really today. One is more just the discussion that I think you're looking for. So we have an Office of Emergency Management uh that's run by Ryan Zolikoffer, who's assigned to that. And then, you know, with Ryan working conjunction and hired most recently is is Andres, who's on the line. I'm going to let him unmute himself here in a second so he can speak to some of the direct uh things that we're doing with ADAPT. And then in general, what we're doing when it comes to emergency preparedness. Because that's that's part of the OEM or community outreach when it comes to emergency preparedness. And then after him, uh John Johnson, our Fire Marshal is on the line. Uh I know, and we work with the town to secure Zone Haven. Zone Haven is an evacuation tool notification system. Uh it was used during the fires that we saw, the kit, you know, the fires up in the mountains behind us uh this last uh summer. Uh and it's also something being implemented between ourselves and the Police Department, your 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 Police Department. Uh Chief McCully uh knows about that. But I'll let John talk about that once Andres is done. So Andres is going to cover our, you know, our interactions with ADAPT and the town when it comes to emergency management uh day to day and how we're supporting that. And then John will talk about evacuation. Zone Haven has a short presentation to talk about what they can do. And if your your police officers or chief wants to talk about that, I'm sure they can speak to what what that relationship looks like as well. So first flip to Andres.
Good afternoon, um members of of Atherton State Council and and our Board of Directors. My name's Andres Sasebado. I'm relatively recent here at the district. Um and my role is is as the Emergency Services Specialist, um working with Brian Zalikoffer, who's our Emergency Manager, um with your staff and with your volunteers and specifically with ADAPT. So one of the roles that we're doing is is restarting our um cert training classes. We've had to do them uh what's called a hybrid program, which is using uh online technology to do that. Uh we started one. We're still kind of in the middle of it. We're moving to uh be able to do our hands on, they have to do hands on skills demonstrations as well. And so we're in the process of planning that um and figuring out how we can do that in a safe and effective manner. Um been working with ADAPT for the last uh nine months in terms of of them and the other volunteer community groups and working in terms of figuring out how best we can support them going forward. Uh including uh having a meeting with our e-Prep uh the board, the Fire Board's e-Prep Committee uh yesterday, uh specifically looking at what are the policies and mechanisms that we could provide uh direct support to these volunteer groups. Happy to answer any questions at this at this moment, but I know we were pressed for time, so I didn't want to go on too 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 much longer.
Well, I'm not exactly sure. Uh uh there was a lot going on.
Was there a presentation for Zone?
I know, I was wondering if there was. I don't.
We do. If we're done with Andres and any questions, then we can go ahead and begin that if you'd like. You ready?
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right. Uh we'll go ahead and start with Commander Larson. I know we kind of got this prepped and then we'll get started.
So so this is the Zone Haven? Is that what it's? Okay, so yeah, we got that presentation. It was sent around earlier.
All right, Commander Larson, go ahead and I'll let you start.
Sounds good. Yeah, thank you. Uh so we'll move on to Zone Haven now. And I just, uh I'd like to start by saying the Atherton Police Department is participating in the Zone Haven project. And we're working in collaboration with the Memo Fire Department. And with that, I will turn it over to Marshal Johnston.
All right, and uh we have Charlie Crocker here with Zone Haven. If you can go ahead and share your screen. And as we are well aware, uh through the past few years, we're definitely aware that wildfires and other incidents are a priority. And we are learning that through that problem, that initial attacks right now are not being super effective. And with that, we know that we have to have a a large amount of coordination and command to be able to make sure that the community is aware and definitely prepared in how we are going to respond. Uh we are learning that also uh through the change that we are having mass amount of rescues and casualties. And we're learning that uh with vulnerable populations that are most at risk, that cannot evacuation or need assistance in evacuation and how we are preparing for that. Obviously, traffic congestion is one uh item that we see in the news. And seeing that when people have to evacuate, where do they go and uh being able to communicate that effectively? And especially over the large areas that we have to evacuate. And so Zone Haven has been developed so that we can pre-plan all of this information ahead of time. On the next uh slide, we see that what has happened in the past is really on the hoods of trucks or at um the uh incident commands. They are right there while the incident is happening, happening, trying to determine what are the evacuation areas, where do they mark them off, and then try to get that communicated out. What we are doing through Zone Haven uh through the Office of OES and with CalFires, developed this program with Zone Haven so that we can pre-plan all of the county with all of these zones and then communicate this out to all of the residents and businesses to know your zone. And when we can then educate and get those zones to be evacuated early and get that communicated out well. The next slide actually shows the importance of that because now, when we have the community educated well and good information that is passed out and through that communication together, we can actually make sure that through all of the messaging that it is unified and it's efficient and timely in aiding the community, community to be able to evacuate properly and have the information that is needed so that it is efficient. And so now I'm going to hand this over to Charlie Crocker with Zone Haven.
All right, uh it's a privilege to be here. Thank you for your time. I've met some of you before. I think I've uh presented at at a few different uh events in this area. I'm happy to take any questions along the way. Um working with uh the 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 folks really in Semitale County. We were born from working in Semitale County and parts of Contra Costa County. Uh we've been able to come up and build a platform that provides for multi-agency coordination. We bring together real time, uh map-based information. Core is integrating with your existing systems. We're not replacing your community warning system. We're sending information to that. We're not replacing Intera or other um tablet command or other tools that are in the trucks. We're integrating with that information. Key thing is gathering hyper-local information. Only you, uh the residents and you, the the local agencies have the key information about each individual zone. Each zone has its own personality. Some of them have livestock, some of them have um um uh gates that could be opened for during an evacuation, et cetera. How do we get that information and make it available to other folks uh who come to help? There's a lot of mutual aid that happens during these large events. So the real goal here is to reduce the reflex time so that um when people get to an event, they notice that there's a problem, they can do a quick analysis and they can make an evacuation. And instead of it taking, you know, forty minutes, two hours, four hours, a couple days, they're able to do that in a much shorter timeframe. And it's accessible and consistent uh for the community. So the the tool that that um has been deployed in Semitale County is zone-based. Um you can get access to that today yourself. Um the zones are uh um threat aware, so they understand flood, they understand tsunami, they understand fire. Um and they are really focused on the evacuability of that uh specific region. And then we've been helping drive a lot of collaboration. Uh we've seen collaboration across counties, across agencies uh and across cities as people learn how to use the tool together. Here's some photographs from uh the tool being used this summer in this last summer during the CZU complex fire. Um they used it on a tablet, they used it on laptops. Um they also printed out the maps in order to understand and have that communication. And these meetings went incredibly smoothly across uh groups that were representing three different counties. We had Santa Clara County, Santa Cruz County and San Mateo County, all working from one single evacuation map. Even PG&E and AT&amp;T and others, as they came in and were able to help repopulate some of the areas, were able to use the same zones and have the same communication. It really, really drastically improved the evacuation and the repopulation of over seventy thousand people. Um at the CZU complex fire, we went from having one zone, we didn't really know where it was going to go on August eighteenth. And um um five days later, we evacuated a hundred and thirty-four zones across three counties. Over seventy thousand people were were involved. And we were able to do this incredibly fast and incredibly uh efficiently. And that wasn't, when I say we, I'm I shouldn't take any of the credit. This was in the tent. These were, this was CalFire. This was Santa Cruz Sheriff, this was um San Mateo County Sheriff, et et cetera, that, all those folks working together.
Mr. Crocker? Hi, sorry to interrupt. This is Mayor Lewis. Um one of my council members, Councilmember Widmer, has his hand raised. You had indicated that you would take questions along, so sorry to interrupt, but Councilmember Widmer.
Sure, uh so I've I've, you know, I looked through the charts before we even started. You talked about all the interfaces that this is uh linked with, but what I don't see is it's linked with the SMC alerts, which is what uh, you know, all the certs and.
Yeah, so I can.
Use on a regular basis. That's what we look at.
Yep, so um I can, in the document, um I mean, this is a fairly high level um story document here. But um we integrate, we're working, we work very closely with Jeff Norris and the OES team. They have all of the zones inside the actual Everbridge system. Um the zones have also been structured so that they work for what's called the WIA and IPaaS. This is the the reverse cellular where they can actually call cell phones that are in specific areas, um which is incredibly valuable because it calls people even if they're not registered. Um but it requires a set, a special set of zones that are not very complicated. The system, it can't handle very complicated zones. So we've created two sets, one for Everbridge and one that you get to see on the maps and that kind of thing. So whenever somebody makes a change in the evacuation status, it immediately notifies the um Jeff Norris and his team. They already have the zones in the system and then they're able to affect the alert. In the future, when they get more comfortable with this, we've actually have APIs where there's the application can actually drive Everbridge directly. But early on in the implementation, it's often um that the 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 local folks want to make sure that they have a hand in it before they start really letting the system do do some of the work. So um we're very embedded with uh Everbridge there. Everbridge is also in Sonoma County, in Alameda County. They're bringing it into Contra Costa County. Santa Cruz may be changing to Everbridge as well. So that is one of the key uh integration points for us, um of which Semitale County is one of them.
Okay, was there some sort of early alert that would go to the coordinators, you know, to get people ready and start moving things or or?
Um I'm not, I don't quite, well, the the, we sort of think of it in two, two uh phases. There's initial attack, so first person on scene, there's smoke. Uh you know, is this thing going to get big? Um we might need to make a very fast decision during that timeframe, right? That's one approach. The second approach is, you know, day two, you've you've established the incident command center in Santa Cruz, they brought, they brought in the tents and that kind of thing. At that point, you have a much more uh of a larger process. Many more people are in the system, that kind of thing. And at that point, you've got your PIOs involved, your you, maybe your EOC is up and running. And at that point, there's a, there's just a much higher level of coordination that is really automatically happening.
Okay, so so Andre, perhaps, you know, we could have a cert class that's going to go into more depth on this. I appreciate it. Thanks.
If you don't mind, so there, we are actually working on a training class that is going to be for all the elected officials and uh also higher city uh personnel that will be able to see uh the behind the scenes activity and understand what will take place. And that way, you'll be able to view and see the different interactions that'll take place. So we are actually working on that training for you.
Okay, but I would also roll it out to the certs in the area.
Yeah, that's going to happen. That'll happen. Don't worry.
All right, thank you very much.
And and that's a program called Know Your Zone. And so the cert, the cert folks will know that. And just for context, let me, let me just give you this from an operational standpoint. We're more successful as a fire agency when areas are evacuated and we don't have to focus on being part of that evacuation. Meaning care facilities, homes, and then we could focus on the firefight. Um that, this last year, you know, we had one of our chief officers involved in a fire in Santa Rosa. Just quick, quick story, Six Mile Firefront coming out at them from Napa. Gets down to the wash, comes up the hill. They got five engine companies in the, in the, one of our chief officers. They lose eight houses, they save sixty. You know, it's a, it's an amazing story. You know, embers coming inside ways, you can only imagine it, right? But they were able to do that for a couple reasons. They saved that part of the community because they didn't have to focus on evacuation, so they couldn't firefight, which is what we would prefer to be doing, obviously. But when people's lives are at risk, we got to stop and and do that, like we saw in Paradise, like we've seen in other fires, right? The other part of that is adequate water supply. They had an undisturbed water supply, lots of water, they could flow massive amounts of water, almost like you would flow at a commercial building fire. Deck guns going, hand lines going. And they gave it, you know, more than than the the old college try, so to speak. And they saved an entire part of that community because of that. So that's, that's why programs like this, getting it down to the granular, getting people out of the way, making sure lives aren't lost, and as much properties can be saved if it comes our way is important. Don't forget, what'd you see this last year? The the line for CalFire for the CZU was two eighty. That was the acceptable, well, not acceptable, that was the potential loss area. Portola Valley, Woodside, gone. What was six, with Six Mile Amber Cast, that's a scary proposition of what's was called the asbestos forest. You know, we got to rethink what we're doing, and this is part of that. We started this three years ago, the county fire chiefs, and and got it progressively faster than anyone else because of the partnerships in San Mateo County amongst the fire agencies. But equally, law enforcement. So this thing has evolved. It's a tremendous tool. It can go down to the uh to the Know Your Zone cert level, and that's.
So Chief, thank you very much. I have, I have a Councilmember Hawkins-Manwellyan wants to make a comment, but I just, uh from what you were just uh talking about, it seems like um that PD, Police Department and the fire work together on this, like the fire fights the fire and police focus on evacuation. Does that, so doesn't that work that way?
Ideally, in any disaster, everybody has a role. And the role, and the one of the roles of law enforcement is evacuation and shelter. That is not a primary role for fire. Because fire obviously has the, you know, we have the only capability to suppress fire, and that's what we do. So, you know, we need to be nimble, we need to be, you know, on the move, and we need to be dynamic. So, you know, we need to be nimble, we need to be, you know, on the move, and we need to be dynamic. And that's very difficult when you find yourself tied up on evacuating care facilities or people not self evacuating and going through neighborhoods and discovering people that, you know, all of a sudden we need to get out of an area. So, you know, there's a symbiotic relationship between police and fire. We're well aware of it, your police department's on top of it. John specifically has got the lead as the fire marshal. And as you hear by what your commander is saying, you know, they, this is a partnership and it's an important partnership.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Hawkins-Manwellyan, would you like to make your comment now or question?
I would. First, first I want to say, I think this is absolutely awesome. I love it, congratulations to all of you. The, the question I have is this real time map information available down to the actual residents? And does it interface or could it interface with things like Waze and Apple Maps that everyone has on their phone? So that you can actually get the information where everyone has it in their hand? Or do we go, have to go to, isn't it app? What's the consumer interface?
Give me five more minutes to go through a few slides and I'll answer most of those questions. Would that be okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Awesome stuff, I love it.
So I'm, I'll just continue a little bit with this story and then I'll, I'll be done and then we can have a more conversation. This is an example just of the fires that happened this in Northern California this season. Six of the top twenty fires ever, most destructive fires happened this season. So the number you see here is the number of jurisdictions, just the counties. So, you know, CZU complex had three counties, Glass Fire had three counties, August complex had six counties involved. You can imagine the counties, now the number of fire departments, now the number of police departments, the number of Office of Emergency Services. It can get very complicated. At the Glass Fire, you can see over on this side, each of the three counties had their own website that described evacuations. Each website had a different way of describing the evacuation. Some of them had road closures, some of them had individual zones, some zones had names. There were zones in Sonoma called Calistoga because of a road. So when they evacuated those zones, people who lived in Calistoga in Napa County thought that they were being evacuated. So there is a lack of coordination that happens, you know, and it's just by the fact that we have so many people that are involved. Everyone is working hard, this is not, this is not a negative. The fact that we even have maps is amazing. We're looking at taking it to, to the next level. So the goal here is to have a single authoritative source. Here are the eleven zones in Santa Clara County, these are, these are screenshots from the CZU complex fire. These were the ones that were going to be put under warning for the, I think it was on the twenty fourth of August, because it looked like the fire was going to keep heading over there. So these eleven zones, we have information about those. That same information was put into the news release. There was one single link all the public could go to, whether you were in Santa Clara County, San Mateo County, or Contra Costa County, oh, sorry, or Santa Cruz County. One link where everybody went to to be able to see that information. That's, that's our community site, community.zonehaven.com. Go there now, find your zone, learn your zone now. We've got, you know, all sorts of stuff, refrigerator magnets, other things that we can help the community to understand that. That same information from this authoritative source gets posted on Twitter and Facebook. You asked about Waze, we have a partnership with Waze, Waze has all of the zones in their system. If we shut, if your agency shut down a zone in the system, Waze is notified and they actually redirect traffic around the zone. We are continuing to build our relationships, we haven't got them all, but we have conversations with Apple Maps, Google Maps. We're looking at Airbnb because how do you address your transient population? How do they know, people that are visiting, how do they know when they're not signed up for your community warning system? And the same tool, the same data is integrated into the police and the fire operational tools. This is an operational tool that Santa Clara County uses that actually has the same information in it. So our whole process is about getting agency approved zones, working with the agencies to build out preplans. Every single zone has a very detailed preplan that has been put together by computer analysis and then entry of information from both law, fire and Office of Emergency Services. The tool supports trainings. Here's an example of a training that was run in Contra Costa County with affecting parts of Alameda County. And the cool outcome of this was that they learned that Golden Gate Fields was the area that the the Contra Costa folks wanted to send people for safety. Alameda County said, hey, that's not, we can't do that, we don't have a relationship with those guys. So now, because of the training, Alameda and Contra Costa are working together with the private landowner to see if they can actually turn that into a temporary evacuation facility. So this is the kind of collaboration that it starts to drive. Multi-channel notifications, Everbridge, all the different places. And then finally, the concept of Know Your Zone. How do we get your folks, your community to start engaging? This is a billboard near the San Francisco Airport that the South, City of South San Francisco has put up as part of the Know Your Zone campaign. So different agencies or different levels and stages of rolling out the Know Your Zone campaign. So that's it, any other questions?
So
Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes, Director Solano.
Yeah, I have a question. Has, has this been interfaced with Veri, is it Veri term, is our CAD system in San Mateo County?
So, yeah, I think it's Versa term. Yeah, I may be wrong, but yeah, so the CAD system itself, we, we have not integrated with the CAD system. There, there, there's two, there's two, two reasons to. One would be for them to have the zones, the other is for us to get the alerts and have them put in our system. But at this point, there's a lot of noise that comes out too. So like, you know, do you want an alert to go out through our system to the same folks that are already receiving that through their tablet command or through the CAD system itself? So, you know, we have the ability to do that. It just hasn't become something that the agencies have said, we need that right now in the system. There's a lot of other stuff that is, I think, right now currently higher value.
So, so the new immediate system that San Mateo County has, do you have any plans, have you met with them, have you discussed the, you know, the sharing of information relative to, with the OES unit there?
We are very embedded with Dan Belleville and his team. We've been working with the EOC for two years now, so they've been very engaged with us. We worked with them at the beginning of COVID. We actually rolled out the site to support COVID with OES as being the primary sponsor, as well as working with Kevin Rose from the Sheriff's Office, who's also a part of that whole organization. So they're all very engaged and understand how the system can be used. We're not over integrating it yet because, you know, it, it does, it can create complications. So the real question that people have in an EOC environment is what maps do you put up on the wall, right? What's your pane of glass? And so there are other maps right now that people are using through either the Web EOC tool, tablet command and others. And so our goal is, we don't necessarily have to be the pane of glass, but we want to make sure that everybody has access to the single source of truth.
So thank you very much, Mr. Crocker, and thank you very much, Director Solano. Any other board member, council member have a comment? I want to congratulate you on this, what looks like an amazing tool. And I would like to know how we can get this information into every Atherton residence hands to, to use and understand. And, and I need to understand how this is funded. I am hoping that the fire district can help us with this.
Yep, we are already planning on that. So right now I'm working with Commander Larson and we are getting ready to complete our in-house training. Once that is ready, we're going to be working on our community education program and we'll be working on the funding and getting that education out to the community. So we will come to you when we are ready to do that joint effort.
Okay, I, did you just clarify what you said, the last part, that we would join together in the funding of it? Or, or the educational part?
On the educational part, the funding, I'll have to chat with Commander Larson, but I'm sure that, I mean, I already have some budget that's set aside for community education. So I'm not worried about being able to, to do that, because that's part of our job is to do community education. And so we just need to see what exactly we want to perform for the correct education of the community. And then we will come forth with, if there are any needs.
Okay, well, I would certainly hope that we can create a robust marketing plan for this. Because as you know, we are at risk with our people up on the west side, Walsh Road in particular. And I know that our residents would be very appreciative to know that some of their tax dollars are going to help finance this. And I see that Councilmember Hawkins-Manwellyan has raised her hand. So Diana, would you like to add to that?
I do, just a quick, well, I think, I think this is awesome, I'd love to see us do that. But what I was going to ask about is, is it also tied in with smoke information? Because we need to advance our alert system to residents about smoke and smoke dangers. I think this is going to be a personal thing I want to see going forward, so that everybody has information about that. Would you be able to get that information as well on the same app?
So we, we do provide already from a couple of different sources, air quality data per zone. So if you click on your zone, it pops up, you can click on the weather panel and it'll give you temperature, humidity, et cetera, and it includes air quality. But if, if you guys want a higher level of, of that information, there's a lot of different sources for it. So we're trying to be careful that, that the application doesn't become just a dumping ground for every solution, everybody wants to solve everything. We really want to make sure we're helping evacuate communities and get communities prepared for evacuations. You know, it's very easy to see scope creep happen. And when, you know, when that happens, sometimes things lose their value. So right now, we're, we're really focused on, on that. But if air quality is something we want to manage as part of a potential shelter in place order or evacuation order, now it starts to really make sense.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, if, if there's specific toxins and stuff, if that was built into it, so awesome, love it.
Okay.
Hey Mayor?
Yes.
So Ryan Zolakoff is prepared to talk about, since you mentioned Walsh Road.
Yes.
Walsh, the existing partnership, the Walsh Road evacuation siren system and how, you know, we need to upgrade that. And it, you know, it references here an LRAD and he can go through that. But he's, he's ready to go or should be ready to go, he'll unmute himself here.
Okay, I just, this, this is a great presentation, let's roll into the next one, Chief.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Crocker.
Hi, can everybody hear me? This is Ryan Zolakoff from Mendel Park Fire Protection District. So e- each year, the fire district in partnership with the Atherton PD as well as Cal Water, we test the Walsh Road siren two times a year. The first week in June and the first week of January, we tested it actually this April. We got a little bit behind on schedule, but we do test the system two times a year, working with our partners. We send out SMC alert notifications within the general vicinity of the Cal Water area associated with the risks associated with wildland fires. We also have an LRAD mobile siren capabilities that we bring over to the west side of the jurisdiction in April through the end of the summer in order to prepare for wildland potential risks. Currently, the siren system up at Walsh Road is more of a tone system. It doesn't have voice over command capabilities, similar to like LRAD, where we can do voice over commands. So we're looking at possibly trying to upgrade the system at the Cal Water property to provide more of an expansion as far as reaching out to the residents. But we do do that two times a year and we test that, and we're hoping that that will be upgraded in the near future.
And to add, to add on that, so that's more of your low tech, old tech type of system. But sometimes, you know, if everything doesn't work, as we've seen up in the fires, it can be a combination of things that would be needed. So for people that, for example, have their phones in a different room, charging in the middle of the night, all of a sudden, you know, somebody's banging on their door and they didn't know there was a fire coming their way, that, that solves part of that issue, at least in that part of Atherton. That was a partnership we did, it's hard to believe, but it's been ten years already. And so as Ryan mentioned, you know, that siren technology is, I'm not going to say antiquated, but I'm going to say there's, there's a better, as he mentioned, on voiceover and decibels. And as you recall, we did a test up there and invited some of the council members back a few years ago when we bought that LRAD trailer, that was really to test out its capabilities. So we do have a mobile unit, it isn't, it isn't big enough really with the tree coverage in Atherton. And we, you know, we would hope to move, working with Cal Water, that actual site further up the hill, so it's not in that basin and use solar panel and battery technology, which is a lot better today with an LRAD. So at least in that corridor along the Walsh Road, we would upgrade to that type of a system.
Thank you, Chief. I think our city meander has a question for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I think you answered some of it. But Chief, could you, just for the benefit of those in the room, go into a little more detail briefly about what an LRAD is and how it works versus a siren?
Yeah, no, I'll let, I'll let Ryan do it because Ryan's been the point man on working, and LRAD is actually, the company is, is no longer the same company, so they don't call it anymore that same name, but Ryan can go through what it is.
Yeah, so the, the LRAD has a lot more technological capabilities where it's multiple languages that you can pre-script communications associated with specific directions that you want to give to your community and have it repeated over and over again without having to have a handheld radial kind of transmission. Currently, right now, we only have two different tones up in the Cal Water area that gets sounded. And each tone has a different, unique sound to it. One's for a dam breach and the other's for a wildland fire. With the LRAD, it stands for Long Range Acoustic Device. It provides the capability where we can actually not only do a siren, but actually provide direction associated with what routes to take, when to go. And it goes on a repeater over and over again without having to do a handheld kind of radio transmission with one person sitting there having to communicate. So it has a lot of different capabilities that the current siren doesn't have. And one of it being tones, voice over and multiple languages. And then also the ability as far as the range is a lot greater. Come this April, like I, like I say, you will have two sirens in your jurisdiction each year. Right now, the current siren that's up at the Cal Water property, obviously that's a mounted pole siren. But also we locate our mobile LRAD system to the Almond Jaw House currently in Atherton. So we have two siren capabilities. So if there was an event this year or whatnot, you would hear, hear a siren, which is up by the Cal Water property. And then we would also mobilize our LRAD, which would be voiced over to provide clear directions associated with what to do and where to go. So, you know, we're looking to have the capability of upgrading the old siren with an LRAD where we can do voice over.
And, and the point of that, the point of installing all that back in the day, since, you know, I don't remember who was around. But remember, that whole corridor is one of the only places where you don't have multiple ways out of there. Essentially, if you're up on Walsh Road towards the end, outside of leaving by foot or the horse tunnel or what have you, you, you would have to drive down to Alameda de los Polcos. That was part of the concern, was that there wasn't, there was really this one way out problem. And so we didn't want to see people get caught in there. For the rest of Atherton, for the most part, you know, that's, that's a little bit different scenario. And equally, you know, if we look at just the CZU fire, those are the closest residents up there to that two eighty cutoff line. The, the good news, if you want to say that, was that San Mateo County did not have as large of a burn area in the CZU fire as did Santa Cruz County and part of Santa Clara. But the bad news is that fuel still exists and that's ten X of what it should be. So I don't remember, as you probably don't see, and a bunch of trucks coming out of there logging this last year. And as we all know, there's not enough water right now in rain. And so we're looking at potential again for, you know, the significant fire season, which doesn't bode well. So, you know, that, those folks there with that tree canopy and tree canopy throughout Atherton, I think it's a significant concern, as are trees and foliage like eucalyptus groves and so forth that, you know, are basically extremely flammable and will, you know, will only propagate additional ember cast if they catch on fire. So that's, that's an important system. So that's, that's an important system. And it needs, it does need to be upgraded as far as we're concerned. But again, we did do that in partnership with Cal Water a decade ago.
So Chief, I thank you very much. And I hate to sound like a broken record, but again, Walsh Road over the last 10 years has been significantly developed, I should say. A lot of the older homes torn down, newer homes with sprinkler systems have been installed. Bigger homes, larger homes, lots of landscaping and new residents who probably have not been made aware necessarily of this siren or the L RAD system or whatever. And I want to go back to the education of all those residents and training of those residents. I know that they do have a good ADAPT group up there. But I know at one point, the fire district had put together a little brochure that, you know, was handed out. But I do feel that more education and outreach needs to be done, especially, you know, could people may not understand what that siren means, you know? What does it mean in the two tones or whatever? So to the extent that we can create some, a, a program to educate our residents up there of fire dangers and fire signals and alarms. I think we, we need to do that. Any other?
Just so you know, what we do do is that, that is an annual thing for us, as Ryan mentioned, and outreach and so forth and SMC alert. And even, you know, I wouldn't say going door to door. A lot of these are gated facilities or homes now. But we do go out annually, it's like Fire Marshal Johnson just, you know, asked if we could broaden it. But we try to go to the, you know, the foothill areas like Walsh Road and put out literature around the Fourth of July so that people know, you know, what to be concerned about. But that said, you know, there's a, we, we can have, we can be more effective with a newer system in a different location, not only because technology now allows us to do that, but, you know, again, battery technology too, where before we were kind of stuck with a fixed power source and so forth, where I think now we don't, we, we wouldn't need to do it the same way. So we, we do need to upgrade that system.
I think Councilmember Hawkins Manuelian would like to make a comment.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, it wasn't clear to me, what is the path to having the L RAD adopted? Do we have that available now or is it on the horizon?
It is not available now. It would be something the board could program in the budget. We have had it in the past. Yeah, I leave that up to the, the board liaisons to work out with the council.
I have one more question there. There's been a, there was a lot of money just put out that was announced that was going to be for fire abatement by the state. And I'm wondering if some of that money will be available to get this L RAD deployed. Is that considered part of that grant that's coming up?
Yeah, that, that's so new. That's a great question. I would just say to you that sometimes they're going to look at priority areas. And unfortunately, just so you know, in the, in the big fires that occurred of the last four years, well, five really, the timber management plan for the state, which was upgraded in 2018, thanks to Jerry Hill, actually, in many ways, in a hearing that he held in 2017 after Santa Rosa, did not even include the Santa Cruz mountain area. So that's not even in the timber management plan. So I guess to answer your question is, we're, we're going to have to look at that. And then on many of these grants, it's a matter of, you know, who's got the priorities. So I'm not going to say it's out of the realm of doing it. It's just so new, nobody knows quite yet how it's supposed to, to work.
I think Director President McLaughlin.
Thank you. You know, Chief, just to clarify, I want to be sure that I'm right on this. The, the mobile L RAD, it, it's on a trailer, it's trailer mounted. And it could be taken up to the Walsh Road area if, if conditions warranted it, is that?
Yeah, actually, the plan would be to put it down the hill on Alameda de los Polgus. And it does, because it is mobile, it could go up about 60 feet, I think is what our height is. But the, and then use the, the siren obviously on the top of the hill for the intended purpose. But we, you know, we had, we would like to upgrade that, that Walsh Road.
Sure.
With a permanent, yeah, a more permanent thing.
And then the other thing, ha- have we done mailings in the past to individual residences in that Walsh Road area with, again, perhaps information regarding the signals and what they mean and how they should be interpreted and what they should do if they hear them?
I, I'll let, I'll let Ryan answer that, but I will tell you, every year we actually send out a unit dur- around Fourth of July and we go door to door. Fire Marshal Johnson typically, you know, they arrange for part of that. But Ryan could probably tell you the outreach for the sirens. So I'll let him jump back in on that one.
Yeah, great, great, great question, President. So what we do is we, we work with Atherton PD. We, we try to promote that through our social media networks as well as on the websites for the town of Atherton associated with when those siren sounds, what to do and what your evacuation route is. Now with the new technology out there and the social media platforms, I think we can probably continue to utilize Nextdoor and Twitter and Facebook and try to collaborate with the town of Atherton's social media pages to ensure that those messages are on, on those, those town of Atherton social media sites. But right now, we, we post that information on our, on our websites and stuff.
Okay, I, I would just ask that you consider a mailing, see, you know, see if that would be worthwhile and, you know, something that people could hang on.
Fire Marshal Johnson's actually, I don't know if he's, John, if you want to speak to that, I know we just discussed doing that.
Your Chief, if, if I could just say, you know, I'm reminded that we have a hard stop at seven o'clock. We're rolling into a, another meeting.
Yeah, we're, we're done. So on, on this one, unless there's more questions, so.
I think we, we saw this SOC report to, to discuss.
Thank you very much, President McLaughlin. Going on then, the item number three, the report on standards of cover.
Yeah, so councilmembers and directors, we just gave an update, which we can obviously send the town, but to the, to the fire district board. It's been a year, as I mentioned, well, a little bit over a year. We did an updated standards of cover in the end of 2019. It actually is part of an overall accreditation program that we're currently engaged in as well. What a standards of coverage is, or standards of cover as it's called, along with a, a essentially a fire threat, you know, matrix where we're looking at what are our risks and so forth. We did a combined report that we could send you the whole report if you like, or just the summary. And essentially what it did is it boils down to a number of things, actionable items, some of which include obviously working with, you know, entities such as yourself. Really what, what the, the points are, and I'll read them to you. It's, you know, for the district to maintain adequate reserves for cash and, you know, purchase of different things based upon economic downturn, continue to maintain apparatus and equipment, a replacement plan, things like that. Those are more along the lines of how we would budget and so forth and what we would do with reserves. And then the other ones that I think directly affect you is to evaluate growth within the district to take advantage of opportunities used, specially designated tax revenues to fund stations or other capital assets. That's, I think, somewhat related. And then add D, or recommendation D we discussed tonight, which is right in this report, add a second battalion chief per shift for a total of three additional battalion chiefs and have them over on, as I mentioned, that side of the railroad tracks or on the west side of the fire district. That is an immediate need for the board to, to address based again upon AVL and other things that are being implemented currently and a program that we had in place for two years in terms of trainees, standardized program for pre-incident target hazard planning. And, and that would include the town, that does include Zone Haven. That does include emergency preparedness, CERT groups, our OEM office and your police department. So there are different layers there that, you know, need to be addressed specifically. And some of that is obviously getting done. Limit the use of traffic calming and other measures that increase travel time. So appropriate, appropriate types of traffic control devices are important to the district. Fire Marshal can speak to that. Anytime you see a hump, lump or bump that doesn't have the carve outs for fire apparatus units, then that's something that the district never agreed to and more than likely is a problem for us. You know, our units fully loaded with water, you know, you're looking at engines probably are about 44,000 pounds. A ladder truck is upwards of 70,000 pounds, you know, humps, lumps, bumps, all those different things. That doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't help the chassis and the longevity of those units from front end alignments to other mechanical aspects of the chassis and suspension that destroys them, quite honestly. So that's always a concern and that's the reason if, if we're going to have some type of traffic control device, that it be A, agreed upon and B, that it be the proper one that the district would prescribe. And Fire Marshal Johnson is very familiar with that. And then work with the cities, it specifically says Atherton, this is recommendation G, Mellow Park and East Callalter to designate primary emergency response routes. And I think last time we met, we did talk about, I think there were 12 or 14 in the town. Those would be routes that, you know, serve the entire community or other aspects of the fire district, meaning other communities in the fire district. So, you know, looking at a totality of circumstance or the common good, you know, where would you want to have those primary routes? Where do we prescribe those so that we give the entire community, you know, the best travel or response time so we can get there as quickly as possible? That's always something I think that should be discussed at the council board level and hopefully adopted. And then also it says in here, work with you and look at emergency preparedness, planning and response efforts. That's recommendation H. And again, that's an area that's always a concern because you never know when there's going to be a significant emergency as we just discussed, and certainly wildfire, natural disasters and other things, windstorms, rain and flooding, although we haven't seen that for a while. You know, Atherton always has a challenge, as you all know, with heavy winds, a lot of rain and the trees coming down or branches coming down at certain times of the year. So that's, that's equally another threat to many of the residents and so forth. And finally, you know, improve the efficiency of response to emergency medical incidents. I think I covered that earlier, again, to the size and terminology used, effective force, number of resources, and that directly correlates to building new facilities where we can add those. Where in the past we could not, you know, fire station four, for example, had four bedrooms. There, there's no way to then, especially during COVID, add more units and more personnel when you, you know, it's an older, it was an older backend station. It couldn't fit a till or ladder truck. I mean, there were many limitations to the old buildings that were built 60, 70 years ago, as, as you well know. Because you know, doing your city center, you know, your limitations that you had there. And finally, and I'm sensitive to time because I know we're almost down to 15 minutes left. I'll end with, you know, review dispatch processes to reduce call processing times. We're doing that, reduce turnout time. We have new software that we're using to look at what our response times are. This was just reported to the, the board, a board committee about how that works. A, a new contract that we have, that's all part of our accreditation process. And, you know, again, AVL makes that a little complicated because of changes at dispatch, but it's certainly areas that we're, we're well aware of. You know, we're looking at development district wide, how that impacts our response, as you well know. We looked at, you know, relocating Rescue 77 to Station Six would, would put it, you know, within an area that would service the town because of Station Six location. That was, as I mentioned, changed during COVID. But that's, that's also something that we would look for, what we call another plus one, two-person smaller rescue vehicle at some point to be running out of that station. And that's for all intents and purposes, what it, what it covers, what it says, and opportunities for the future for the council and board have discussion.
Thank you, Chief, for that brief synopsis of the report. I, you did indicate that this is a report that could be provided to us.
It is. We just updated the board in March and I can certainly send you that summary that we've given the board.
Yeah.
There are elements up again on this for discussion with the board at our next meeting.
Good. I do have a question for you is, how does this report, the standards of cover report and requirements interact with the district's ISO rating for residents?
Well, they are separate. And, you know, let me say this, ISO only, unfortunately, although getting better, only looks at fire response. They don't look at emergency medical response. So they're somewhat specific. In the past, you know, I will say, we did have more of a water problem. And, and we did engage both the town, the district, Cal Water, in a multi-year improvement process. I mean, it still is ongoing. You know, where we learned about your, what was it? It's called your pavement ma- PMP, pavement management plan?
PMI?
Okay, is it PMI now? Well, when I say PMP, it meant something different.
Pavement man- management, maintenance index?
Yeah, now, so at the time, I think they called pavement management plan, but we didn't know what that was. And here, here's the point. The point is, if you're going to pave streets, that's a great opportunity before you do that. As you know, we get everything squared away. So if you have to upsize water mains, if we have to run different types of electrical or whatever piping sewer, then we upgrade that there. So and it really, at the end of the day, we weren't really up to speed with what you were doing as a city. Cal Water was kind of doing its own thing, I think with the cut they would do in the street. I think it was like a paved 10 feet on either side. So we all got on the same page. And bottom line, I know that we have aggressively worked with you over the years and Cal Water specifically on these, these types of water upgrades, which is part of the overall benefit to Atherton, but equally improving, potentially improving our ISO rating, which is what insurance rates many times are, are referenced to.
I guess, okay. Not sure, not sure.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, oh, yes, Councilmember Lampres. Hi, nice to hear from you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks very much. And, and Chief, first, thanks everybody for, for this meeting. But Chief, just a quick question. I, I think you know, we're going through a neighborhood traffic management action plan process. We're reaching out to residents to, to talk about traffic management in the town. I want to make sure that you all are, are getting input into that appropriately. Are, are you properly linked into that? You feel like you're getting good input into it?
Uh, we have, I haven't heard anything yet, but I think, you know, we can certainly send you the primary response routes. We're always interested in all the streets to some extent. But I think, you know, if we're going to impact major response routes that benefit the whole community, those are ones that we would be very keen on knowing about.
Yeah, George, can I just touch basically to make sure that, that, you know, we're keeping them properly in, in the loop and getting input as we go through that process?
We're going, we will do that.
Actually, there's a, there's a meeting tonight.
Going on right now.
Rob, on right now that we're, we're missing because this meeting was scheduled after that one was already publicized. But we're going to have another one.
We can send you those routes again if you'd like.
We, we know what, we know what your emergency routes are. They're the same, right?
I beat that drum forever, you know that.
Yeah, the, the meetings that are ongoing now are, are largely geared toward gathering community input.
Sure.
Your concerns are, and once that input's gathered, then we start the behind the scenes stuff, looking and linking to the emergency response routes. If some of the recommendations are speed dumps, then we look at the district's standards for those in terms of traffic control devices and engage the district at that point.
Yeah, I think last time we did this, you know, I, I, you know, just quickly, because I know we want to have probably some time for QA. But, you know, we did look at it together. I know that we obviously prefer not going to the control devices, more of the passive stop signs and other things if that's possible. But, you know, I leave that up, up to you and then we can talk about whatever street or streets, you know, would be affected.
All right, any other Atherton council member have a comment or a question about this at this time?
Yeah, I'll ask a quick question. Chief, I know that our city manager has sent you some information on an easement to get into the back part of Lindenwood. The only reason that we're bringing that up is because, you know, the, the old report that you got a couple of years ago indicated that that far end might be, not get the same service as, as, as the rest of the town. And you, there was a former director who made a big deal about that publicly as well as privately to each of us about that there was a problem and there needed to be an easement so that you could get in there. So are, are you going to pursue that?
So I just sent that, I'll let Fire Marshal Johnson speak to that because I just sent that over to him. Typically easements or additional access, you know, I'll, I'll initially flip it over to Fire Prevention to take a look at it. I know he has looked at it, so I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, so I'm in contact with Dawn with Cal Water and she just sent me the map today. And we're looking to see exactly what would be appropriate and how that could.
And we're looking to see exactly what would be appropriate and how that could be of benefit to the Fire District and the community. So right now, I'm evaluating the map and seeing exactly what the intentions are with Cal Water and then with the town and the district.
Okay, great, thanks.
And Bill, you know, and for all, you know, all the councilmembers, remember, the district specifically, what we're always interested in, and it, and it is kind of a key point, it's access and water supply. So, you know, that's our lane, obviously because of what we do. And, you know, anytime, I, I appreciate that you sent that to us because once, you know, that was a concern, continues to be a concern, access and water supply, you know, anytime we can gain an advantage, make something better, we're always very, you know, very sincere about looking at those things and making sure that if that improves our ability to serve the community, a resident, a building, whatever, that's, that's kind of our, our bread and butter, our job.
Okay, great, thanks. Appreciate it. Just keep us informed, Dawn. Thank you.
Yeah, we will. Thank you.
Shall I open it up to the members of the public? I see we do have a few members of the public. Any hands raised, Anthony?
No, no, ma'am. I don't, I don't see any.
All right. So we just have a few minutes left. This has been very informative, and I appreciate your time, all the directors and Fire Chief and Fire Marshal and our commander to meet with us. And I think there's more work that needs to be done for the benefit of our Atherton residents, insofar as fire services, fire education, and more attention, I think, for our residents. And that would come in the form of really, truly reaching out to them and educating them on the benefits of the Fire District for them. Obviously, the safety of our residents is our, our primary concern. And I think the Fire District also should have that in their heart, too. And we can see a lot of progress. I think the Zone Haven platform is something that really deserves a lot of attention and education outreach. It takes a while to penetrate people's consciousness, you know, because they all have very busy lives and just, you know, sending one flyer or, you know, dropping one mailer off. And hopefully, i- it doesn't really do the trick sometimes. And hopefully, once that this COVID pandemic is in our rearview mirror, and we can maybe host and hold some town hall meetings, it's, we could certainly host some Zoom meetings, and that's what this neighborhood traffic management plan is all about. I see Director Virginia Chang-Corley making motions. Hi, Virginia.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. I just, thank you for bringing the issue of mailers and public education and increasing that. In your experience, and maybe this is a, a better question for the town manager, it, when you do your own public education, what, what do you think is the optimal, optimal number of pieces of communications, for example, that you've seen that's been effective for your residents? Just to give us some kind of, you know, kind of baseline so that we can, you know, figure out what we need to do.
It, it varies, actually, and it depends on the touch point that that resident has with the town. We have, we have, you know, same as the district, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, news flashes, and the website itself. Those are all the electronic media that we use, and we put all of it out through all of those channels. And we cover probably about 1,200 to 1,300, 1,200 to 1,300 emails with those lists. And some of them are duplicative locations. And then the print media, when we send it out via letter, a formal letter, town letterhead, that works better for a lot of our residents. And then we also send out postcards, which work better for another section of our, our residents. So it really depends on what they respond to. I don't think there's a definitive answer. Sorry, I could give you.
Yeah, and then, and I get it, because there are just so different, so many different ways of communication, right, that you're communicating. I was just trying to get an understanding of what a potential number could be too. But it sounds like, you know, if you base everything off of your 8,000 residents, I mean, you're using different types of communication pieces.
Yes, Diana?
I have one last emergency preparedness question. Do we have any earthquake detection equipment? And does that then interface with all these alert systems? I know there's the My Shake, which is statewide. Is that, so how, who's in charge of that? Is that the police or fire? How does that work?
So each one of the fire stations, and Station Four will have this as well as a smart station, meaning there's a, a computer in the station, will have access to the state shake alert system, and then an early warning system. One of the things that we have not built out, but we believe that we can, is to co-locate that or use an LRAD in conjunction for an early warning system. The good news is, so the firehouses are on those, and if you get a new station, how it works is, it'll do a tone, it'll open the doors, turn off the gas, turn on the lights, and do a countdown to when the anticipated earthquake will hit. That allows the firefighters to be prepared. That is not a community-wide benefit yet. And when I say that, there is a community part of it. You can go through the state and sign up for it. But in terms of how we would implement at a, you know, community level, that piece using an LRAD or other device with an audible to a part of the community is not in place yet. But it could be.
Could be.
And it could happen at Station Four, because there will be a monopole at that facility, not super high, but, you know, based upon its location, it does sit at the top of the, the hill where it is and back up to the hillside. So, you know, to put one there would be strategic. And to your earlier point about, you know, smoke and air, we do have air monitoring stations primarily on our east side stations at Station 77 and Station Two. They don't, you know, we've allowed a, a company to put those in for the benefit of the community. We don't own them, but I know that's part of how they measure and monitor pollution and so forth, and air quality.
Mayor?
Yes, President McLaughlin, and then Councilmember Hawkins Van Willian.
Okay, you know, just to wrap it up on our end, before we get to
Yeah.
the council member, I just, I want to thank you for, you know, meeting with us. I think this is very helpful. I find it very helpful. I know there's very frequent contact on the working level, at the working level, between Chief Chalkel-Human and Chief McCauley, and then all the other, you know, the, the Police Department, the Fire Department. It's good for us, I think, as the governing bodies to get together periodically. Director Chang-Corley is the liaison between the district and the, the town. So you or any other councilperson should feel free to reach out to her if you think there's something that she can address effectively. And, you know, we look forward to, to working with you. And, and, you know, I think you'll see some progress on some of the things that we've discussed here tonight. So thank you again.
Thank you. Diane, one, one, one more question?
Yeah, the one last thing I want to say is, has come to my attention that one of the problems in Atherton is that, that with all our trees, it's very hard to do emergency communications. And I'm hoping that in the future, we'll be able to work with you to solve some of that. You mentioned the monopole. And again, I don't know what I'm talking about, but I've been, I've heard that the monopole will be able to solve some of our communications problems that we have going down to the assembly points. So I'm hoping in the future, we can find a venue where we can work with you on that.
Okay, thank you. Council Vice Mayor Lempres, do you want to say one last thing before we try to wrap this up? I know he's not.
I had, no, I had, had you unmuted. And actually, I don't have anything to say, except thanks for this meeting, and I look forward to, you know, continuing discussions.
Great, thank you. All right. President McLaughlin, shall we call for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconds. Thank you very much, everyone.
See you guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Minutes on our call.